Perfect tree that everyone in the house looks out on and it's like.
It's probably gonna fly.
Yeah, it was just shocking that it came on really fast.
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's been pretty remarkable this fall if you look. You can just watch clouds.
Yeah, yeah, that's what we've had going on.
But we are sending. I think just through the drought conditions.
Yeah.
You know, more rock, more zoos.
Yeah.
And my sister-in-law makes some bourbon whiskey sauce for her bread.
Oh, I do that, I do that too.
Yummers.
We also.
No, no.
Not Louisiana.
That was always the joke. I grew up in a dry town.
That's Texas.
Yeah.
Yeah. Where'd you grow up?
La Mesa.
Yeah.
San Angelo.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, first time I moved down Austin area, like nineteen eighty-two. And I went on a Sunday into HEB to pick up a bottle of wine and I was told nope and I'm like.
Yeah.
It's Sunday.
We had that in Louisiana too.
Yeah.
There was always.
There's a drive-up place to buy your liquor while you're driving.
Same in New Orleans, the daiquiri shop. Yeah, the daiquiri shop.
I grew up in Montana, so we were pros half the time.
Yeah. Yeah.
My daughter attends, or my granddaughter attends University of Texas. And my daughter moved down years ago, she would also went to University of Texas.
Fun, I love Austin. Love, love.
Took my wife down there last year, she'd never been to Texas. And I took her down there and I was amazed, so I thought, oh, it's gonna be nice. It was a hundred and three degrees.
Texas was hit hard last summer.
Yeah.
They really were.
I thought whenever we got married in May in Louisiana that it was gonna be okay. The humidity was ninety and it was about ninety-five degrees, we were all just melted. I chucked my dress, we all were barefoot, that was us and Jane.
Bob had sweat marks through his tux. He wouldn't think of it up here. It was pretty funny. Pretty funny.
Spray the inside of it with starch.
You need to.
And then it just all runs down.
No way, kid. How funny.
All the time when we went to church, I'd wear a dress clothes and shoes.
Something she didn't want you sweating in.
Spray the inside of it.
She had sweaty shoes.
Or socks.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, they were wet when we ran around the river.
How funny.
As interesting as this conversation is. Let's call a meeting to work before I start having nightmares about living in Washington DC. Okay, let's come to work. And. Ben, do you want to go over our public comment expectations procedures?
Sure. We do generally allow a lot of public comments. Commenters, we ask to get the attention of the chair before making your comments and to announce who you are, where you're from. For those online, you can raise your hand using the zoom function at the bottom of the screen. Doesn't look like we have anybody on our phone right now. But call-ins can't raise their hand by pressing star nine and then mute or unmute using star six once you have our attention. The planning commission does have the ability to keep their meetings under control, various ways there was.
Boy, that sounds ominous, various ways to maintain control. Thanks, Ben. Mary, any comments for us?
Yeah, a good evening, Mary Rappar Stevenson, resident. I sent you all copies of the remand order for Chinadere. I hope you all got them, I sent them to the email that I have for the planning commission.
Would they receive any?
I tried to send it to the, to your attorney, but it came back undeliverable. And Leanna said she would ask him, because he has his business email on your, on the website. You know, Chinadere has, was a big project when it started, what, two thousand and five? And it raised a lot of community discussion. One of the community members actually took the city to court with Columbia Riverkeeper as. As part of that lawsuit to she and Columbia Riverkeeper, Avis Junis, who has since passed. Her house lived up on the hill and she was perturbed by Chinadere. And so, and the planning commission at the time set a lot of conditions for Chinadere. And which have been slowly whittled away. And I object to that on general principles. You know, developers come into our communities and they want us to do something, we set conditions and then as time goes on. Some of those conditions fall by the wayside because, oh, the economy is bad, this is bad. It's gonna cost too much money to do this or that. So, and the judge had actually sent a remand order back to the city. And I think, you know, by this time that remand order is almost like a memory. And then, so I wanted to remind the city that we actually did have conditions on Chinadere. About the trails and everything else. It's a nice document, there are still records in the courthouse, I went and got a copy of it, thirty-three pages. And I think, you know, when a judge gives a remand order, you need to pay attention. Nobody's above the law and the planning commission again set conditions and from the last discussion that Chinadere. When Chinadere was up for discussion at the city council, or no, here, for the trail thing. It became apparent that, you know, some of those conditions are not being met. And I don't think that should happen as time goes by. The community has a right to expect that if. The planning commission and the city council are going to vote for things, that they, that the. Rules are followed. Even if time goes by. So that's, like I say, I sent it to you all, I sent an email with the attachments, the remand order and the lawsuit itself. And for you all who weren't here for Chinadere, I think it's a good. Little court action to look at. As a learning experience, thank you.
Thank you, Mary, I, I did not receive that.
I didn't either.
I just checked mine and I.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, I sent it a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Okay.
I have it right here. Cool.
Yeah, but thank you, Mary, and appreciate those comments. Because I know that that project did have, you know, a fair amount of interest and discussion at the time and that was, yeah, this before I was here, so. Any further public comment on items that are not on our agenda?
Just in general?
Just in general.
I read it through the stuff, so.
So I did have one public comment, which would be that, I know we're looking at parking. This evening, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I know, well, no, but I know we were told Judith Kents had submitted something to the committee regarding parking along Russell Avenue. And her need for access. And we would like to further our need for access as well, which is the same as Judith's. We also run a small business along Russell Avenue. Yeah, there you go.
Okay.
In your name, sir.
Oh, Thomas McCloskey, sir.
I guess one thing is that she keeps saying that she has older people that want to park there and I said, well, you know, fly to the city to get. You know, access. Handicap access. One place on there wouldn't be a bad thing, right? You know, but we're not gonna run out and tell people they can't park.
In your name, ma'am.
Elise Scora.
And what part of Russell are you talking about?
The upper portion of Russell, right below Vancouver Avenue.
And I think we'll have that discussion on ADA parking spots here as a priority item when we get to that agenda, so. Thank you for coming tonight. Okay, let's move on to new business, I think here, Ben, unless we want to amend our.
I would suggest that you consider that, moving item five up.
Okay. Are there any objections to that, folks? All right, let's. Let's move up to agenda item five, that's the shoreline permit request for the Rock Cove hospitality. Ben, I understand from the correspondence, we have that there's a request for continuance.
Request for continuance has been submitted, this is the project that you reviewed in parts at the last meeting, accepted some public comments at the last meeting for. Held the record open for the applicants to submit some additional information. They're requesting additional time to gather that, to fully address the concerns, so. It would be up to you if you want to open the public hearing for anyone who came tonight to provide comments. Or just continue right away before making any of those decisions. I want to run through the appearance of fairness disclosures again, but that's generally the scope of what's in front of us tonight.
Okay, Ben, let's. When we jump into this, let's go through the appearance of fairness test.
Appearance of fairness is something that's required by Washington state statutes, that you make decisions fairly and impartially. And. You're asked to demonstrate your ability to be fair and impartial in that decision-making process, so. Three questions that we ask, and I'll put them all out there and then ask you all to provide disclosures that you have. One is if you have any financial interest in the outcome of the proposal that would impact your ability to fairly decide on this matter. The other is if you've had any ex parte communications, any communications with any party outside of these chambers for against. If you have disclosed that and the contents of those discussions. And then the third one is just a very general, if there's anything about the proposal or the applicant or the project or location that you believe could. Skew your ability to be fair or impartial in the decision-making process, so those are three questions, I'll put it all to you to make any disclosure to this.
Okay. Start with August.
I have no financial interest, I have no ex parte communication and I have no. Reason that I could not make a unbiased decision.
Yeah.
I've had no ex parte conversation, no financial interest, and I can be unbiased on this.
And I have no financial interest, no ex parte contact, and I believe I can be impartial.
No disclosures by the commission, there's still the opportunity commissioners to be challenged in their participation in decision-making. So offer that to the applicants and the community at large, whether like to challenge the planning commissioners' appearance of things.
So I'm just asking for a clarification, if there, if a continuance is granted, will the public have a chance to look at whatever the applicant submits? Before the next, or whenever you set it for meeting?
Yes.
Cause I didn't hear anything was.
Yeah.
Available. Okay, thank you.
Okay. And so, the reason for this continuance, I think, is to address some of the other agency comments that were there. And Ben, I, I know you talked with those agencies and. Reading through those comments, I just had some, I had some questions, because it doesn't seem like in some ways, those comments. Sort of fit a, what is really in some ways a brown site, a former industrial site. I see more applicable to a, to a more natural site in terms of preservation of what we have or restoration. Are they aware of the history of this site, I mean?
They are aware of the history of the site, the. Department of Fish and Wildlife. In the lens that they look through things. Is based on the best available science and that best available science is developed through a green field. And so that's, is covering the comments that they provided. The lens that ecology lives through is net loss of ecological functions. And so where their comments are directed at that. I think that it is acknowledging that it's a brown field and needing more justification about how this is not reducing ecological functions of the site.
Yeah, I know that in terms of dealing with fish and wildlife over riparian standards, that it has been difficult. To some of this one-size-fits-all sorts of. Situations that arise. But I think that's just a question to bounce back in terms of what is it that we're really trying to reasonably achieve on this site, given its history? Given its past use and. Question just back to the agency, I guess. So with that, any other general thoughts before we move, I'm anxious to see how those agencies. How you're able to work with those agencies and what, what response they may come back with for us to take a look at.
You're allowed to speak? One of the problems that we're having right now is the, or I as a developer are having is reaching out to the subs. Such as, you know, HHR, HPR and the people that are addressing your environmental issues. They're stacked like ELS, we can't get a response. I'm in another project, I'm in the fourth month of doing a cultural study on some old barns that are fifty years old. And so one of the reasons for the continuous here is we like to get moving forward, but we can't get the answers and I feel like. The address that would be in address from fishing wildlife, you know, on that or completely. Kind of eleventh hour to us, if we'd known those, I felt we didn't know those comments a lot earlier, we could have, you know, spent the money and time and got that addressed. Now, when they come in the last hour and say, hey, your rip rap is this and this is that and that is that, so. In order to reply, now we have to go back to these groups in the subcontractors, contractors that we have hired to get that response. And some of them, I'm just pulling to, to get responses because of their load and the work that they have in this project. So I don't want to continue this on personally, but I have no choice because I can't get their groups to answer. And I feel like the example is, as Ben would say, through the lens here, that used to be a mill, it was polluted. There was horse maneuvering, sodas stacked on it, you know? We cleaned it up, we want to build something, now they're going back to, well, we don't feel this, you know, this or that. And I think we're moving this up in the ladder, something that's gonna be productive, brings in revenue for the, you know, city, county, et cetera. But to get there, I have to go through this gauntlet of different opinions and different contractors that I have to hire to get this done. So that's the obstacles I'm facing, I know in no means, whatever do I want to avoid? You know, giving everybody the answers they need and meeting the needs. But if they keep adding, not really adding, but if these last minute letters I feel come in. Then I've got to turn right around, hire somebody else and it continues this all on before I can get this project going. So that's just a little bit from my side, how I'm feeling about it, you know? I also have, we have. About a million five into this project in city, you know? I'd like to see that become revenue and so we have, you know, a valid investment in the community into that property we want to see it work. We're struggling to get there, you know, with the contractors and then some of the comments.
Understand, I appreciate that, I, I know that oftentimes our permitting processes are lengthy. And, and difficult. You know, we're working on a number of permitting string blending activities at the state level. Capital restoration, just because it does take long. And it's tough with the workloads to oftentimes be as timely as we'd like to be on such decisions. I appreciate that. Any, any thoughts, do we need a motion, I assume we need a motion to continue this hearing or? Do we have a motion to continue this hearing?
Continue this until the December meeting, correct?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to continue the public hearing on the shoreline permit for the Rock Cove hospitality. Project until December. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed say no. Nope. Motion passes. Thank you, and just for the record, you should probably state your name, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Dean Maldonado, owner of FDM Development, developer for Rock. Thanks to me. Ben, we have a date, will we be ready in December again, do you think anything will delay us?
So ELS said that they need three weeks from the date that we told them to go. So that was part of the reason for this. Other part was we wanted to make sure that we got more information, cost estimate for the crossing and. Making sure that we were able to address that, so we've had some slope analysis and some things to. That our engineers are pulling together, but the main part is ELS. To make sure that they get their responses in for the agency comments, because you guys can make whatever decision you want, you gotta make sure that it's. Backed by sound findings that they wouldn't use to appeal use of the hearing like hearing board.
Appreciate that, look forward to seeing what you guys come back with in December, so thank you.
Great, thank you.
And we will. And we will, um. Begin that meeting also with no appearance, uh, appearance disclosure, uh, process. So. As usual, the recommendation is to use your own judgments if your approach, uh, for ex parte indication, uh, generally we suggest. You know, this town place something we should bring to the.
I do like chocolate. Just to pay that up.
Yeah, ex parte chocolate is.
We'll teach you market that.
Since we have folks here that really have an interest in, uh. In the downtown planning committee, uh, stuff. And and perhaps not so keen an interest in the, in the planning commission work plan for the next year. Can we, uh, I guess I'd ask my fellow planning commission members, can we go to the downtown? Uh, parking committee report now?
Sounds great.
Yeah, sorry, a little bit. I forget it a little closer.
All right, let me start this screen sharing process, um. The work we did in August is starting to come together to, um, be able to make some recommendations on. So I wanted to give a presentation about where things are, um. In advance of you getting any sort of recommendations from the parking. Yeah, okay. Uh, downtown parking report is based on usage study, uh, data that we collected in twenty twenty one and then we recollected in August of this year. Uh, so ready to jump into that with you all.
Before we do that, Ben, is this just informational? We'll get something back for. For a decision in a, in what, December or?
I think it can come together in December or at least, um. Drafts for review and and better discussion.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
Yeah, this is more informational because it's it's ready to go and it's.
Yeah, I just wanted expectations to be clear here in terms of what we have.
So when we started, um, jumping into this project, we're trying to. Answer several questions. One is, is there enough ADA parking in our downtown? And when I say ADA parking, I mean on street parking, curbside. Uh, parking that's available to reserve for, um. Those with accessibility needs. And then is there enough parking generally? Uh, what should we, what should be done about our parking inventory? And then what should we be done about our parking regulations once we understand the dynamics a little bit better? So. We've been, uh, evaluating those things by engaging, uh, shareholders in the downtown area. Uh, we did a community survey in, uh, twenty twenty one that was a broad community survey, uh, and then we did a targeted community. Uh, questionnaire just to the downtown business owners, uh, property owners about their thoughts. Aren't able to to compare some of those things. Uh, this, the committee's work is led by. Um, planning commission, the, um, Anne and, um. Many members of the committee we have on that.
Nice.
Five, uh, better contributing, very good, and I am an effort to help us answer these questions. We did a full inventory of the parking supply downtown. Uh, that's the full curbside supply. Uh, and then also made some judgments and reached out to downtown property owners about the onsite. Supply. And so we've got numbers, uh, to. Uh, to use for that. And then we assessed how, uh, it's currently being used and what the the future demands, uh, would be for that and then recommending. Actions to balance that supply, the inventory with the the future trends that we expect. So, uh, first question is, is there enough ADA parking? It's a really easy answer. There's not. There are three, um, curbside ADA spaces in all of our downtown study area. Two of those are immediately to the east of Stevenson Landing off of Cascade Avenue. And one of those is immediately west of Stevenson Landing and Cascade Avenue. Uh, so three, trace. That's.
Only three.
They're separated from the the real core of the downtown by three sets of railroad tracks, so six rails. Uh, and at least forty feet of elevation. So that's four flights of stairs. So if you're going to use that as a person's accessibility needs. Uh, you're going to be limited to. Staying on the water going down there or finding, uh, a site, a space that would work for you if the spaces are available. Forecasting demand and future demand by any measure, three spaces is not enough. Uh, using the federally proposed public right of way, uh, accessibility guidelines, the PROWAG. Uh, they're suggesting that our downtown area needs to have thirty spaces. We've got three, um, suggesting.
Thirty ADA.
Group, basically, yeah, in in the whole downtown study area. So that study area goes from where. Vancouver Avenue intersects with Rock Creek Drive on the, uh, west end. Over to the cabin on the east end. From Vancouver to Cascade Avenue, north to south. Uh, the, uh, accessible space need was, uh, spearheaded directly by, um, members of the parking. Advisory Committee. So that's something we really need to get a handle on. And so, uh, that became the first thing that we started looking at. Um, and identified how we can have thirty three. So increase it from three to thirty three, spread those outs around the downtown, uh, area. The. Parking Advisory Committee hasn't, uh, recommended specific spaces, but they'll be able to evaluate that and, uh, recommend them. The PROWAG or this proposed PROWAG suggests adding them over time as you do major projects. Then you take care of parking, or then you take care of the ADA. Say. I'm gonna stumble with the, um, terminology. ADA applies to buildings and facilities and not streets. The PROWAG applies to streets, so you can't say an ADA space on the street because it just isn't a thing for accessible space.
So what does it take to establish an accessible space? I mean, if it says over time as you're doing other projects, it suggests that. There is some level of work that needs to be done. And I guess I'm. What is that? I mean signage, obviously, or the ramps or?
If. So here's a parking space. If there's more than, I think, fourteen feet. Of right of way this way. Then the expectation would be that you have a small, um. Uh.
Ramp.
Land, yeah, landing zone, yeah, right outside of your, your driver passenger side door.
To the, to the curb.
To the curb. Um, and so you went to the parking or the the sidewalk around that. You land at, uh, wheel level and then the, then there's a ramp onto the sidewalk, uh, to for that accessible path thing. If you don't have fourteen feet, and I'm going off memory, I'm not sure if it's fourteen feet, but. Generally, that's it. Then the suggestions are to, um, put it at the. Front or end of the block so that there's a, uh, the shortest possible accessible, um, pathway. From the parking. And then in all cases, you need to mark it, uh, for ADA purposes with pavement sign.
And don't they have to be a certain length that all of our parking spots are not?
They. Do need to be a certain length and.
Yeah, so that's another consideration.
Something. So all of them require a part of a sidewalk curb cut too.
If there's fourteen. If there's not fourteen feet, then. Locating it right next to the curb cut, right, right next to where it's an accessible, um, crosswalk or.
Okay.
Yeah, so the parking advisory committee will be asked to, uh, recommend adding some immediately. So in advance of major projects, we can, we can do this. Uh, and thinking about, uh, several of them, so starting on First Street near the EMS facility, um. At Central, uh, West First Street on East First Streets where the First Street Overlook Project will be under construction, uh, right now behind. Uh, hardware store. As one on Second Streets, uh, South Side near Seymour and near the pharmacy. As more of a temporary solution, there's a long term solution we could do with curb cut right there at the pharmacy, uh, to. For accessible users to to go more directly there. But since there's no curb cut there now, we're getting a close sort of a. Existing. Uh, Second Street to Northwest Corner intersection with Russell Street to provide some. Site distance bonus when it's not in use by a, um, accessible user. Uh, Second Streets, uh, South Side of Walnut Park. So. Those are pretty low hanging fruit, pretty easy ones that staff has identified will have that conversation with the parking advisor to. Those are other ones that may or may, uh, not be easier or have a higher priority. All of these recommendations will. Go into a master parking claim, um, and then for the public works departments, uh, comments on that side. Uh, examples of what I just talked about and some other ones. So. Parking space, ADA parking spaces that are identified on Rock Creek Drive, um. Uh, First Street, Second Street, Cascade Avenue. Uh, we've identified them all over town. Generally, we prioritize those east to west corridors. Because they're flat. And so an accessible user doesn't have to get out on Russell and worry about the hill slope. Along with that, so prioritizing where it's flats, um, where there would be, um, but. Uh, ancillary site distance benefit when not in use and, um. Where there's a destination where. ADA. Users would go or just anyone would go because the the need is throwing on that. So. Uh. All wrapped up, identified there are cost ranges that would be associated with these, um, to help the machine process and and prioritization process.
So before we go, let's, I guess I want to understand. Where we were looking, where you were referring to it when you were talking about. ADA spaces.
So, uh, you know, our interest primarily, of course, because that's where we live and where our business is, is is just on on the west side of Russell between Vancouver and Second. Um. I do have a couple of, um, sort of larger scale questions. And I know Ben, early in this presentation, there was a comment about engaging, um. People and, uh, I thought maybe you could expand on that a little bit because I don't. Other than, you know, meeting you the other day, um. Uh, we haven't really heard a whole lot about this, other than that there's sort of, sort of a big thing going on. So, um, it'd be nice to do that. And and then, um. Two, I had a question about existing parking regulations on the books because I know. Earlier this year, we had a a go around with Carolyn about parking on the street twenty four hours. Um, and I wonder if if those regulations are going to be part of this, that reviewing existing stuff that that is really not. Relevant or or currently. You know, I, Carol and I had this conversation about the the regulations aren't up to date, the street names aren't correct and and unfortunately would be certainly difficult, but they're still on the book. So. Um, I I wonder if that's. Going to be something that Barton, um, has been looking at as well.
So hold tight on both of those and I'll. If I don't already answer on the presentation, we'll.
Okay.
Good.
Good.
Okay, so is there enough ADA parking? There is not enough ADA parking. Uh, what do we intend to do about it? We tend to add it, satisfy the expectations of the PROWAG. And, um, we intend to. If the recommendation is made, we would intend to do those things, add some immediately, um. Moving on then to the question of is there enough parking in general? Uh, the public, based on the, uh, community questionnaires that we did, uh, in twenty twenty one. Think that. You're good at that, um. Okay. Uh. Public thinks that there is enough during the off season, but not enough during the tourist season. And so I know that those are small visuals and that's kind of the intent that. Red is not enough, green is enough, and, uh, blue was just, um, did not respond or neutral on the the subject. So. You can see on there that in the off season, yeah, it's more than that. I think that parking is sufficient.
Is this somewhat influenced by not enough near the destination or, I mean, I'm I'm sure that it probably is.
We've got that data, we'll, we'll dive into, if season the public believes that there's not. Downtown business owners when asked if there's enough parking for their customers. Pretty much split fifty percent say there is. Um, less than fifty percent say that there's not, uh, and the remainder is that, um.
In that context, I mean. Do those that feel that there is, are those the ones like, like A and Js that have off street parking?
There was no follow up, uh, with that. So just to the question of is there enough supply for your customers?
Yeah. Okay.
Uh, there was an interesting thing we read in the. The lead up, uh, to everything is, and it's a question that we did ask of those patients' owners. Um, with the specific phrase that the question was. But do you provide enough or do you, are you the one? It got to the point of who's contributing to the parking problem. Uh, and, uh, the guidance documents that were have shared how, um. Nobody believed that they're, they were the issue. Everyone thought that their neighbor was the issue. That's them. It's not us parking. So. Um, that played out in our, uh, community questionnaire too. But the those who responded for the our business owner questionnaire, those who responded believe that them, their employees. Uh, were parking appropriately, but others were creating problems. So. Um, part of this public, uh, engagement process that maybe did, how we learned about, um, community, uh, expectations, um. And attitudes. We then followed that up with this data collection effort. And so with, and again, just at the high level. Uh, I'll go into details there. Green is enough parking, red is not important, yellow or orange is somewhat, but also. Um, there's a lot of it on there. The data suggests that. Uh, to the extent that there are parking problems, they are localized and time limited. Um, they're not, uh, downtown wide, um. All day concern.
Let me say ten minutes, wh- wh- what do you, what do you mean by that?
I'm into it. Um. And so the PAC will, uh, give us some recommendations based on their understanding of all these problems, how their understanding, these problems are going to be based on. What we go through in here. And so that inventory of of what's out there, there's six hundred and nine parkable spots. Um, that's marked spaces, that's areas where people park. Or could park, um. To get to that number, we are, we assessed, um. Eleven attributes for twelve hundred. Curbside features downtown, um, came up with the distance, um, whether it's signed or whether it has a curb or just a gravel shoulder, or whether there's a. Uh, embankment that prevents you from opening the door, um, issues, issues like that that exist downtown. Uh, off street, I I started to explain that. So, um. Of the business or mixed use. Related properties downtown is what we focused on. We didn't do exclusively residential, uh, properties because, um. Well, I don't know why that decision was made, but just to have a lighter touch on people who are just living. Uh, versus people are making money downtown. Uh, one thousand fifty five. That's A and J, that's the county, that's all the parking at the port and industrial, uh, facility down there. Uh, one thousand and fifty five, so more than the curbside supply. That, like I explained, is a sample and excludes the residential only. And that's the twenty twenty one data on the off street. Nine attributes for those. So do you have ADA? What's the, is it signed? I think we did, um. Pavement versus gravel versus grass on that for some of those attributes. This is what it looks like. Um, if you are a arcade junkie from, uh, the eighties, you'll recognize this potentially as a Pac-Man style. That's the parking advisory committee, um, the PAC and entering the maze downtown, trying to just find. Find your way. So, um, the purple would be off streets, onsite facilities. Uh, the teal there is, um, uh, curbside on street. Which is that that we looked at. This gets fun as we get into the usage study. Um.
You couldn't find a smaller font, huh?
We conducted this in two ways. One is we evaluated who was parked in each spot over the course of the day to see if there's turnover. The way that data is often used in communities is to see. There should be a two-hour time limit, four-hour time limit to start those turning over so that other users can use them. I think what we found in ours is that that won't be a recommendation, but. That's why we would collect something like that. And then we just did a use of study, collected raw numbers for the non-core area. So out Rock Creek Drive. Down on Cascade Avenue.
So you said it wouldn't be a recommendation for that, that timeline. So you found there was adequate turnover?
Yeah. So in 2021 data and 2023 data. The maximum usage of. Downtown wide was 43% of the spots were filled downtown wide. Changes a little bit when we get into the core. Here's, and I want to focus more on this. And again, it's small, but the points are. Really from standing back and looking at it. So this is a scale of zero to 100. As far as what the parking spaces that would be full downtown. The red line on there represents 85%. And this is a key number for evaluating parking dynamics. Eighty-five percent rule, it suggests that when 85% of the spaces in a parking lot. Or along a block face are, are available or less than 85% are used. No, sorry. When you exceed 85% of the usage, then somebody driving down that block face feels like there's not a place to park. And if less than 85% are occupied, the user says, okay, there's cars, but I, there's a spot for me to park. And the suggestion that I know of the 85% rule is that as a public agency, you don't want to invest. Money in parking. If there's not a problem, you don't want to over invest. Where you're going to add to a supply where you don't need the supply. So downtown wide, we're nowhere close to it. We have. The picture changes. So this is 2021. Thursday is on the left and Saturday is on the right. Core area versus non-core area. And so core is Second Street. First Streets from approximately Walking Man to. Eleven Street. And Russell. We're still not close. Now, this is still is only part of the picture. 2021 point in time on, on those specific days, 2023. Is a little higher. Thursday is higher than. Saturday. Overall. And core, a little bit different dynamics, but you see where our, our peaks are. And that's in the middle of the day. Eleven o'clock to two o'clock is where the peak is. It has been a really great project because I'm able to provide you this data, but it's still just drilled down farther and farther. This is that 85% line that I talked about that we're not approaching now. Doesn't mean that there's not localized problems. And, and we'll, we'll get into that. Eighty-five percent rule. Looks at parking through the economic lens. This is setting up the maps that will be on the next page. So red block faces indicate that there's not enough parking. It exceeds that 85% and you should look at investments to. Either spread out where those vehicles park or add to the supply. Orange is enough parking is available, but you should really start identifying things that could be done. It's not available, or if the time goes on, the, the demand increases. Yellow is, it looks just fine. Green is, you're over invested. The guidance document that we used had a different spread. When we applied that to Stevenson and everything that was below 55% usage. That just became the whole downtown. And so we knew the difference. To create different breaks to show the dynamics a little bit better. So we used a little bit different breaks. Those are there. So above 85%, that 85% rule is where we should look at investing in new solutions. Fifty-five to 84 is kind of, things are going along just fine. Below 50 or 25 to 54. No solutions immediately necessary, no investments are appropriate. And then green is we're over invested. In that. So in, in, when you look at these maps, you usually our brain thinks green is good. Green is not good on these screens, not good.
Why is green not good?
It means we've overspent or we've over invested. There's nobody parking there. There's a whole investment that's not being used. I get to a point later that it's not necessarily bad, but just want to underscore is we started.
With growth, that'll change.
That it's not good. And so this is this year's results over the course of the day. So as we're looking. From seven o'clock until the five o'clock hour. We evaluated all of those downtown block frontages. And then we just did a small sample of the off-street lots. Courthouse lot, the AMJ lot is two very large lots. And then all the private parking along Ash Alley. There's not a lot of red that's stretched out in one line at the same time. And there's not a lot of block faces that are red for any long duration. So it's a lot of green. Green is not good. But it's not necessarily bad. It provides us an opportunity to accommodate new development. Direct solidish park over here for constraint areas. So it's a resource that can be used, but at this time we're not, we're just over investing.
It's not costing us anything either. So.
Yeah, it's already. So back to that initial question then, is there enough parking? Here's the, the crux of it. If the public witnessed any block face that was red. Then they're 100% right when they say there's a parking problem downtown. For that block face, for that time period. And so it's going to be a balance as far as what the city does to address that parking problem. And we'll have some recommendations on that. I'll get into, to what that is. The observed parking problems don't stretch out beyond, beyond two consecutive block faces during any one hour. And the longest block face that was red was across from the boat launch. On Cascade Avenue. And I put the, what the weather was like and what the season was like on a slide earlier. 2023, it was windy and it was fishing season. And so.
It was packed.
Yeah, and it was on that route a lot. And so there was turnover within that five hours as the fishermen left. And as the sports people came in, but it was packed. The, when you put it all together. Again, if a member of the public witnessed any red block face, they're right to say that there's a parking problem. They've assessed that correctly. And this is, if you put all the hours together. This is what that looks like. Those lots were red, those block faces were red, not at the same time, but during what we witnessed. In that Russell Streets. Second Street in front of Big River Grill subway. First Streets in front of Walking Man Traverse Market near the EMS Hall. Across from the boat launch, the boat launch itself. The off-street spaces, employee parking spaces along the alley. Get usage. Again, able to drill into a lot of detail. So color retention and that's a first street in front of Walking Man. This is an example of something that's already changed since we did our analysis. So the. Public Works Department received a request to formalize the. Loading zone that had been in front of Walking Man. It had just been an area that wasn't painted with T's and it wasn't clear whether it was a loading zone. There was no regulatory. Document behind it. And so Public Works did formalize that. They established that area had been like three spaces long or long enough to accommodate three spaces. It was just clear. They, the Public Works Department granted a loading zone for two of those spaces. So gained one space back from that loading zone. And added to the inventory on First Street, that red corridor. During all hours and then the loading zone itself is restricted to certain hours to find out all the specific details there. But other than those hours, now we've got two additional spaces that are marked along First Street. Five. So outside of the eight to five hour, now there's two spaces that people can park in. And so that dynamic has already shifted. You know, excited for whenever we would do the next study to see. Whether that block face that was red on this one remains red or whether we've, we've solved a parking problem. The, okay.
So basically you're saying that it's red now because it's some period during the day you are greater than 85%.
It's one that wasn't just some period. It was actually for, if we look at it on Saturday. One hour, two hour, three hour, four hours, then we'll go back. So four hours. Where it, it was red. It's in that core area where we actually assessed the vehicles that were parked there. And so in this slide, if the vehicle has color, it was observed more than once. If it's just gray, that would, it came and went. And so here.
That's cool.
And this helps us, it's like if we were to put a two-hour parking limit over there, we'll change about what's going on. I know. So we're not seeing it. We're not going to need.
And then you have the enforcement.
Exactly.
Then would have to put his enforcement hat on.
And his moped.
Yeah, and go down there and.
The segue, he's got it planned.
Okay. So we've got a, a really good handle on what the issues are. Where the, where the problems are, when the problems are. And so recommendations to address those problems. There are several sources. So Parking Advisory Committee over two efforts, the 2021 committee and the 2023. There's 11 downtown shareholders that have contributed and they've put some their voice to what should be done. The Downtown Plan for Success has several actionable items related to parking. Public preference questionnaires that we collected in 2021. And then staff analysis to, to bring forward to you. I don't want to, again, spend a lot of time on public preference, but pink is what we wish we have. And green is what we see. And so where there's a gap between the two, that's an indication of something to look at. So a lot of the public wishes that there was more angled parking. They don't see a lot of angled parking downtown. Parallel parking pretty much even.
Be pretty tough to put angled parking on, on Second Street. I mean, that's already a narrow, right away.
And it's one also that's. The downtown planning consultants, when they looked at that as part of the downtown plan process. They were strong in their recommendation not to do that because the. Curbside retail environment loses just a little bit as the vehicles get farther away from it. A little bit less likely to want to stop if there, if there was parking available. So it's definitely a balancing act. When considering how to, how to address that public preference.
Well, just safety. I mean, there's enough safety issues with just a parallel marking on Second Street.
Yep. And you see that too. And that other one that there was a big gap between pink and green, a buffer between parking and moving traffic. Feeling of safety. So more small text for Mary. The scope of the recommendations that I've got in here with bold, it doesn't show up very well. There are several. I helped to clarify this as far as what's would likely come to the Planning Commission. In this case, and what we're not considering at this time. So her staff isn't recommending anything related to that at this time and wants to be explicit about that in the document. That we're not recommending timed parking restrictions, that we're not recommending metered parking. Or any sort of residential parking pass for areas. We will recommend implementing a master parking plan that's. Planning Advisory Committee would recommend to you all as part of the change to City Council. Adding to the municipal parking supply, both curbside and off-street. Reducing the parking requirements for new development. These are all things that we've talked about and then adaptively managing parking requirements for changing uses within existing development. So that's a lot of planner speak in there and I apologize for that. But right now, we only require parking to be added. Or private property owner to add parking when there is new development or. When there's an addition to existing developments. And here's the important caveat, where that addition is also a change in the use. And so you can maintain the same use and add, but not requiring the parking. And that's. Decisions like that are made based on the community's ability to enforce it or monitor and, and. Partnering requirements and then the property owner's ability to actually provide the parking. So Stevenson has not required anything like that and anything more involved in the past. Because there just hasn't been the capacity to. Monitor changes in use. We have that capacity now that we didn't have in the nineties. And then there's also the proposals to do the fee-in lieu, voluntary payment in lieu. It would give those property owners an option. To still contribute to the overall supply of parking, even if it's not right on their site, which is what the current requirement is. And I think that that's. Solves some of that, that allows us to adaptively manage the parking requirements for changing uses within the system.
I, I think, is payment in lieu really a viable option? I mean, I guess I don't know how much revenue that would generate. Would it generate enough revenue to actually acquire additional parking? And in that, not only that, you've got the time lag on that too. I mean, it's, you know, if you start building that fund, just, you know, as, as those needs become due. And a, and a property owner wants to pay that, that fee in lieu. It could be years before you have enough money to, to put something in. So. Are there ways to work around that? In other words, does the city put in the, in the parking and have a. You know, a sinking fund there basically where those fees are basically credited back or?
We can establish it in the, yeah. With that master parking plan, what we'll do is identify where additional spaces can be added. Curbside and then municipal lots too. And so there are curbside improvements that would be. On a scale of hundreds of dollars to add one spot to three spots.
Okay.
And so, and we'll have cost estimates for all the projects that we anticipate on that master parking plan. We'll prioritize some of those for the near term. We'll add all those costs up. And divided by the number of spaces we anticipate there and then we'll set a Q based on that. So it may not add up. Quickly, but it will add up to what our estimates will.
Yeah, it's just, I was just, you know, I just got to thinking about, you know, how how could you structure that would would actually. Provide the benefit that. That we need or the the outcome that we're looking for.
Yeah, and it'll put the responsibility on us to keep that um current, what our proposal is um current and to keep the fee current. So satisfied.
Would that take in consideration with the cost of that shareholder would pay if they had to do onsite?
At this time, no. Um some communities do structure their fees that way.
Well, it seems kind of intuitive because obviously if you only have to pay five hundred dollars for. Pay in Lou versus five thousand for putting it onsite. Everybody's gonna pick the in Lou until that source is gone. And then suddenly you're stuck back at that situation like. Well, what do we do for parking now?
And so it'll be, it will be that process of keeping the. Capital improvement, parking capital improvement plan currents and then the number of spaces to pay for that. And so what we have. Far more that we'll um identifying the master parking plan than we're likely doing the next six years and we'll always be able to roll another project and.
The benefit to the the purchase of Lou is that you don't have to take that square footage from. Your property. And so even though it costs five thousand dollars to build that parking space. What is the revenue that not using that space for parking creates? And so as you short side yourself on the front end, it really starts to show up in the long run. So my humble recommendation would be to structure that more at the actual value that. They're getting as a benefit rather than the cost of the space. Than the cost that it takes the city to create the space because at some point, the city's gonna incur. More cost to buy a lot or whatever. Right now, we kind of can make use of the inexpensive. Places that we have. But as the city builds out. You know, a multi-level parking garage is really expensive.
Well, I'm too. I'm also thinking about what we what we set out in the downtown plan in terms of future uses and what we'd like to see. You know, how does that start to fit into your your long-term planning for parking? Because. You know, a number of those areas were that are now. Used fairly sparsely in terms of of activity. Could become pretty intensive uses, you know, multifamily and commercial uses, particularly on that west end of town.
Yeah. And so the the lens that I'm looking through. As staff to president to the um parking advisory committee is that we do have this incredible reserve of. We've overbuilt um. And so um some of this development can. Access that. There. The current uh structure, and I totally understand your point, would be. Would likely lead to a cheaper rate for the first um five years, six years, increasing the rate. Over time, when it, when it would come to buying property to do a municipal lot. I envision the municipal lots in in Beach, if anyone's gone there. Uh there's bathroom there, public parking that's. Yes, um east of this downtown core core um.
That's why I'd say if you, if you gauge it more towards what is the cost benefit of of that. Developer or owner. And that's so that you're not, you know, utilizing your green, but you're building uh. You know. A pool of money that you could use for much more expensive projects down the road. Yeah, well, I'm just saying, don't short yourself because you have a lot of green now. And it's like everybody who got in early, got a great deal on the parking, but. You know, too bad you're so late because now it's twenty thousand dollars for parking space.
But I think it is a good observation that they are, you know, a property owner is going to look at. What what does it cost me to put onsite parking?
Yeah, I mean, you have to be able to sell the economics.
I mean, we we've seen that in a number of regulatory places like. The prohibition for removing trees, for example, and the developer comes in and sucks those trees off so he can put more units in there. And then he gets fined for removing the trees, but. You know, the his bottom line is, hey, it's just the cost of doing business. I'm still making money removing all those trees. And we've seen that down in Vancouver.
So then commission involvement in the parking project going forward and this is where you'll have um bigger. Bigger documents um to sort through than what you've got tonight is to endorse or modify that. Uh master parking plan, the uh we'll look forward from the committee. Uh to add um to the municipal parking supply, uh we're talking about recommending that. Uh adoption of voluntary payment in Lou. Um and we can hash out what that rate is or what the basis of the rate. Uh is and then reference it in the zoning code S M C seventeen. Uh the uh talking about reducing the parking requirements for new development, we did that one time. Uh and consider that if uh we want to go beyond that uh again. And then uh also talk about whether to monitor the use and. Um apply that requirement for a change in use, knowing that they can buy into that um voluntary payment in leave system. It does not, commission involvement doesn't address um. The how um parking is used or available. It is something that we're looking at currently. Can't park. I'm gonna get this wrong. The signs downtown say something like you can't park from two until five in the morning. Any morning. Oh, on second street. Like the actual regulation is from two thirty to five thirty or vice versa. Regulation says morning, the signs say a different thing. And so they can't really be enforced. They're not um. Kept up. And so the police officers don't enforce them. They're not, the signs aren't located everywhere where there's a. Uh prohibition and so. Areas where when we say um overnight parking. The police officer can't write a ticket for it because it would be thrown out immediately. So.
What was that again, Ben?
They can't run a ticket.
It, yeah, the defense is um so obvious against. If somebody were to get a ticket, the defense is so obvious that it's not signed. There's no ability for.
Even if a person calls with a nuisance vehicle that's there every night. It's still. Just asking.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know all the specifics, but. It's a partnership between the city, public works department and the police force to make sure that everything's signed and painted appropriately. So that when that police officer does write a ticket, they know that they can go in front of the judge and say, yes, your honor. Uh and defend that. The um every night between uh. Whatever those hours are in that three-hour period. Was put in place in nineteen seventy-six, I think. And um. A lot of the concern at that time was for from long-haul truckers that would park and their um engine would be running all night to keep it warm. And disturbing the the peace. And so, no, you can't do that at all. Uh so we've put together a draft to relook at that um. Modify it. Um there's still, Public Works Department still believes there is a need. A maintenance need to have some overnight prohibition or early morning prohibition so that the crews can. Do schedule scheduled maintenance at inconsistent times. Street sweepers can go out. And so we're looking at plows, but you you can't predict, you can't schedule the snow. In order to do the plows like that, there would be a plowing. Some comment of that. And uh the current. Draft that was circulated. At Tuesdays, you could park on one side. Tuesdays and Wednesdays, you could park on one side, Mondays and Fridays, the other. And it said that around town. We'll go back to the Public Works Department again to make sure that they're actually going to be scheduling maintenance for those periods or twice a week. Before circulating another draft, but some modification to the every night overnight prohibition. Uh but still retaining some prohibition for those areas where there is one, expanding it to some areas where there isn't one. So that downtown is downtown and those police officers can. Understand where it's at or where to where to look if they are gonna uh seek to take them. Uh that's something that will lead to the city council. But it is a need um that we're really looking at and allowing for overnight parking as we. Talk about additional development downtown, as we project that need in the future, that there will be some need to park there overnight. Uh for building mixed-use buildings or residences, they need to park somewhere. They're gonna park onsite if we're giving them. Uh the option to pay into the curbside supply. So it's multi-pronged program uh that we're looking for. There is. One of the lessons I learned in going around. People are nervous uh when you're out there in your volunteer vest and you're writing down um numbers and people are. Believe that they. Might need to feel guilty about something. I was always trying to be clear that we're just assessing what's going on here. This is a public space, the public space. People are using it and everyone's contributing to any demand and we'll figure out. Whether it's a problem, so. But I guess I say that to say there's no one source to. Uh the problems, if there is a problem. But one of the um actions on here is the dialogue with the downtown workforce, the downtown parking users. Is a soft action I think we can do now to present the data. Hey, we see that. This is a constrained corridor and um. It might be helpful if uh your workforce just parks. Half a block over to open this up. During the middle of the day.
On uh Vancouver. And they've got the whole empty lot next to the courthouse annex where they could park, but they're parking in the street.
And so those are the soft conversations they have in those areas that are red or hands approaching red.
The pharmacy added some extra spaces and they paved their, I think they've got eight spaces now. And that, so that's added something.
Like in Portland, they have zones for these people get to park here at this time and.
Well, they charge you ninety bucks if you go over an hour. And I wanted to stay for an extra class. I came out ninety dollars. Yes, yes. So I'm going, okay, I won't be coming to Portland again in my car.
Ben, I did have a question. Uh going a ways back to the. You know, utilization maps and when you have, you know, it looked like a lot of them would be one block. Is there a a standard for how far you expect somebody to walk? I mean, you've got a red block and two green blocks.
I believe that was the number that that's what people are willing to walk from a parking that's sixty-five feet. That was a couple.
That's three spaces away. So, so they're. Highly localized in what that level of service there is. Um and and what, I mean, each community would be very different. What that level of service is. Our mayor um talks about his experience in uh San Diego. Where if you got within two blocks of where you wanted to be, you're really lucky. Yeah.
I feel bad when I walk down, don't walk down to the brush.
What's um in the draft document that I uncirculated to the Parking Advisory Committee, it'd be to. Say that's. Any two consecutive block faces being red or more than two consecutive block faces being red would be the real problem. And that we should always seek to avoid that. Never have three consecutive during any single hour.
Well, and Stevenson has an issue also that I don't think we've taken into account well enough. It's like Russell. Russell's pretty uphill. And so a lot of people, you know, on top of having to walk. An extra block to do it, having to get up the hill is an issue. So, you know, and Stevenson's built on a hill. So, you know, it's just another thing for us to have to consider.
Uh I rely on Russell to keep me fit.
Well, I think we're pretty lucky. I was visiting my son in Port Townsend. And I spent a number of days up there. And every time we went downtown. We were never more than, never closer than two to three blocks. And it is uphill and downhill. So I think we're actually fairly fortunate in terms of our of our parking situations.
And there's an ancillary benefit to that because then you actually have foot traffic going past other businesses that. They may go past if they were able to park. Two spaces away.
How long are our spaces? They're not more than uh, I've got a small car and Mike's car fits into the spaces downtown. There's not eighteen feet long, uh like they used to be for bigger cars. Spaces are smaller.
Recommendations are to have spaces between twenty-one and twenty-six feet long. And the Parking Advisory Committee in twenty twenty-one split the difference and said, try to make everything twenty-three feet.
Yeah.
And the car, the bigger vehicles that we have here, but.
Not people that needs the extra space for parallel parking.
Yeah, I need to be able to drive right into that.
Your thirty-foot spot will be waiting.
Sometimes people take a little while to get situated. There's an excellent driving school right downtown, I'm sure that.
Oh, you're just parking the.
There's a little parking.
So Ben, the committee's gonna wrap up its work. There'll be a report. We see some of the actions that, you know, that the committee will recommend. Will there be other additional sort of, I mean, well, obviously, if we if we're looking at something, the public will have access. But are there other public comment opportunities on the on the full plan?
There will be. So, yeah, it's the chain from Parking Advisory Committee as the public or subcommittee. Uh to you all. And we haven't yet done our conscientious public involvement. Expectations for how you would review these. These actions, but establish those and then pass off to city council for adoption and possibly to. For additional public engagement.
So what are we looking at in terms of of scheduling? This is kind of leading into the work.
I anticipate having drafts of things uh to present to you in December.
Okay.
From there, um hand it over to you to talk about the public involvement and expectations that you would have. So I can't predict beyond that.
Okay.
Um winter, I would still hope we can uh wrap up parking in winter twenty twenty-four.
Sounds good to me. Let's, let's go to the, to the work planning. Well, I guess as we initiate this, we've got two planning commission members that aren't here.
As we talk about public involvement, I'm sharing the screen and not able to see if we have any hands on the. Okay.
Go to sleep.
Yeah, left.
We do. They're there, just not visible right now. Moving slow on the computer end, so we can't see you right now if your hand is up, but we should be able to very quickly. Okay. I'm happy with how the parking project is coming together, Tiffany, and I think that we can squeeze another um, two-day effort in before your next meeting. So you may ask for a handful to to squeeze that into, but to provide some of that winter data. Uh, we got just um, the September data, the first time around. We tried to get the week of the fourth uh, of July this time, that happened to be when the tall five fires. Since the road was closed, they had a tough decision to make. And so let's just try to reschedule. So the August data that we got was uh, the last full weekend before it started on both sides of the river. We'll try to get the uh, the December data uh, to provide a comparison. So that'd be another thing. And you start going into your discussions about planning uh, for what the parking requirement is to be planned to be closer to the max or closer to well, whenever that would be. We don't know when the max would be. Um, yes, because we've only got those four days of data, but provide you a bigger range to guide our decision-making recommendations.
The work plan, Ben, you want to handle this? Like I say, we're missing two planning commission members. It seems it really would be nice to have them engaged in this conversation too, if we're laying out, you know, where we want to go. We start this conversation now and and then revisit it at the next meeting or maybe we'll keep the planning.
I'm out of the country next meeting, so. I don't know who else, what you want to know right now, who else.
Well, the public would have the input if you want to hear it. Um, I I would like to see you all address climate change and put it somewhere in your working documents. We don't have a lot of documents that deal with climate change in the city at this point in time. And I think we need to do that. Uh, and also trees. Uh, you know, we've got some really nice trees in town and um, and some of them are getting cut down by people who buy them. So I'd like to know if the if those trees are in the cities right away, can the person be told to leave alone in the city right away, right? I mean, yeah, uh, and I'm talking about Russell there in Vancouver, uh, and that, uh, there's there's just some uh, and and we have old apple trees. You need to talk to Gary Olson about the historical value of some of the older, uh, he was just telling me about an apple tree that's down by where you're doing that path uh, on First Street. And it's an old, old tree and very prolific and and my grand is actually doing a heritage tree project up at St. Cloud. So we're doing DNA from trees and they're doing a DNA project with apple trees up in St. Luke too at the Wind River Nursery. So there's a big interest in these old, uh, if they're in your neighborhood. And, uh, you know, uh, and one of the things that has struck me with the firewise programs is uh, that the mantra is cut everything down instead of fireproofing your damn house. Uh, so and then you lose that natural aspect that human beings need around their homes, greenery and other things. Um, um, so you know, there's, um, our our town, I I think, um, the ambiance of our town is much better when we have more green stuff. Uh, the trees that, and you remember the brouhaha when the twenty-year-old trees got cut? And people were very upset. And I know you all are still putting trees in. I put my two cents in for what I wanted to see. I like trees that are pollinator trees, like the linden trees and that which served on that population, pollinators. Um, so and and shade makes a difference in your community. Uh, and windbreaks especially. So, uh, but climate change, I think, is something that works into everything into that. Everything will be around climate change, water, whatever. So, um, I can't remember a document. I don't know if we addressed it in the twenty thirteen COP climate. I I don't think the verbiage even got in there. So I I think it's time to do it. Uh, think about what is climate, how is climate change going to change Stevenson? And what can we do to alleviate the effects of climate change on our residents? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. I think that is, uh, you know, a good comment in something we do, we do need to be looking at. Because things things will change. We're seeing things change now.
Well, there will be money available. Um, um, I I'm on the boundary reward, the of the past president now, thank goodness. But we have a legislative committee and we pay attention to what uh, our legislature is doing. And climate change is the biggie. And and they're they're allocating money for things. And now's the time to get into that stream. If you're going, if you need money to do things.
Yeah, my board received twenty-five million dollars for a Perion restoration work out of that Climate Commitment Act funding.
Eleven eighty, whatever, eleven ten, I think.
No. So Ben, do you want to walk us through this document?
You know, what I might do is um, show off the website that all this information came from. And um, maybe that will prime the bump to get us thinking about what's um how the planning commission might contribute to the city council's strategies. Uh, uh, not really associated with not specifically identified in here. Even years, um, two things are always on your docket. One is reviewing any complan amendment applications that have been submitted in the previous two years. And the second is reviewing uh, conditional use permits and compliance with requirements over the past generally two years or longer. Um, there were no complan amendments that were submitted during the cycle. And so your January to March is not going to be occupied by those. Uh, we've got a few of the conditional uses that will be reviewed in October at that first October meeting. So uh, but not that. I don't see that as being much of a workload. Uh, the currently allocated workload for you all, uh, which is different than for planning staff, certainly uh, is related to the parking. Um, I think that there's a lot of space for you all to um lead on how the city might address strategies related to housing, uh, zoning, obviously. Uh, or others, other issues that touch that are are just so important.
Yeah, I think those issues have emerged too. I mean, we started talking about annexation policy. Uh, and that's something we want to come back. But I think in the course of that, just in the information that you and Carolyn brought to us, it sort of also led to the to the sewer conversation in terms of what do we do in terms of the infrastructure within the city before we start thinking about the infrastructure or annexing additional areas that would require services. And I know this is kind of going back to perhaps some of the reporting on some of these activities, but on the on that sewer situation, I I thought it was pretty interesting. One, people are afraid about what it would cost them to, you know, to hook up to a sewer, particularly if they have to extend mainline in order then to run their their lateral off to their their house and and that expense. And I think the consensus seems to be maybe they ought not to be the ones that that pay for the mainline extensions. But there are also a number of folks that came up back up and said, well, yeah, you want to have these sewer extensions so you can have you know, that increased density that's in your comprehensive plan and your zoning and and we don't want that. So you had, you know, some tension there, you know, amongst some of those participants. I, if not, you know, you know, extending a sewer service so that you would have a higher density because they don't want a higher density in some of those areas. So there's a lot of, you know, none of these are standalone sort of issues. They sort of ripple through, I think, a number of the things that we look at. You know, as the planning commission. And so oftentimes, when we find ourselves dealing with one, we end up looking at